Item, the Star Ledger, the Melbourne Short Hills Independent Press, Tap into Melbourne Short Hills, the Township Clerk and Members of the Township Committee, The Presidents of the PTO and Civic Associations and the Public Library. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few presentations tonight. I will, I'm sorry, we need to do a, can I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed session minutes of May 19, 2025? Mr. Farisuddin, Mr. Bigman, can I have a rule call?
Any comments?
Any comments?
Just a second.
Any, I got the two, yeah. Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, I will now turn it over to Dr. Diskin to introduce the presentations.
All right, thank you very much for coming this evening. We are very excited to have three presentations and we're going to start out with our Eagle Scout and recognize them today. So we'd like to invite our Eagle Scout Masters to come on up and then we'd like to invite all of our Eagle Scouts here tonight and we'd like to present them with an award and this award recognizes their accomplishments of recognition for attaining the esteemed rank of Eagle Scout. This significant accomplishment marks you as a leader of integrity, a dedicated servant and an individual who embodies the highest ideals of scouting. Your achievement will serve as an inspiration to others for years to come. Congratulations and it's signed by myself and our Board President, Mr. Chris Heinrichs. And thank you for all that you do for our young students and our wonderful, a tribute to your dedication as well to see these youngsters and she is such a great teacher. So congratulations. And we have our Scouts and our Masters come on up. All right, what a wonderful achievement and your families and we are very, very proud of you. So congratulations on all of your accomplishments. Our next presentation will be from Hartshorn School. We have the Steam Lab Exploration and we welcome Ms. Pignatero and Ms. Kristy Young. Are you coming? Okay, okay, just for her turn. And we have Mrs. Ostrowski here as well. And we also have our upcoming Principal, Dr. Malucci is here tonight to see this presentation. So we welcome her.
Check.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Diskin, Mr. Connolly and Members of the Board of Education for allowing us to make this presentation to you tonight. We will have Mrs. Pignatero and four students from Hartshorn and they're going to share with you the STEAM initiatives and the progress of the STEAM education at Hartshorn. Mrs. Pignatero, a fourth grade teacher at Hartshorn, is very passionate about STEAM and tonight the students are going to share with you the progress and the vision and everything that's come to fruition with a combined effort of administration, fellow teachers, parents and the PTA. Mrs. Pignatero?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Pignatero and I am a fourth grade teacher at Hartshorn School as well as being in charge of our STEAM Lab and STEAM Camp. I'm here to speak with you tonight about all the ways our Hartshorn students have been positively impacted by many different types of STEAM opportunities our school has offered over the past several years. First, I'd like to start off by recognizing our administrators, Mr. Fratini, Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Ostrowski, the Hartshorn PTO and our Hartshorn staff. Without their guidance, support and advocacy, the Hartshorn STEAM initiatives would never have taken off or continued to grow to where we are today. We are now in a time and place where students continuously rank our STEAM initiatives, STEAM Lab and STEAM Camp as some of the best parts of their experiences at Hartshorn and they and we cannot imagine a school without them. So thank you to our administrators and PTO who continue to allow for these experiences. STEAM education provides students with the means and tools to discover innovative ways of working together and independently to solve problems, display data and intersect the fields of science, technology, engineering, the arts and math. It inspires students to use the left, right sides of their brains concurrently. When we built the Hartshorn STEAM Lab several years ago, we had at that time only an inkling of how the STEAM Lab could evolve and allow for so many other amazing experiences for our students. As you can see from this slide, we expanded the STEAM Lab into before and after-school STEAM programs and a STEAM Camp for our students over the past several years. Our students return year after year excited about the STEAM possibilities that await them. We have many goals when it comes to STEAM education for our students, but I believe the most important goals that we try to keep in mind at all times are that we want to provide a safe place for students to question, explore, share and learn. And we want to foster a mindset that mistakes are steps to learning and that taking risks in a safe environment will allow them to flourish. All the other goals can and will occur once these goals are met. So what's in the Hartshorn STEAM Lab? We've got engineering tools, math, science, social studies and language arts activities such as letter builders, folk tale problem solving kits, theater scripts, sight word activities, replicas of science fossils and bones, tesolations, tangrams, measurement activities and puzzles spanning all subject matters. We have activities that support social, emotional and physical growth along with technology and diversity, all while integrating the arts. Please keep an eye on the following photos in this slideshow to see some of what our students have been up to. All the photos are of our students or physical spaces in our actual school. So the first thing that came about from the STEAM Lab was being able to have scheduled monthly visits for all of our classes from kindergarten through fourth grade. After our building schedule is set, we then take what the remaining periods that are left and we figure out a time when all of our students for every single grade level can visit the STEAM Lab at least once a month. Teachers also have the option of bringing them whenever they other have free time other than that. A typical STEAM Lab session has about 13 stations that the children can utilize, take part in, and every two months they rotate. So those 13 stations will change or have some sort of addition or subtraction to them every two months to keep them fresh. The materials and activities are aligned to the K-4 state standards and they include all of our academic subjects and are tied to diversity, social, emotional learning, technology, media, the arts, music and physical education. Here's a visual of our STEAM Lab. So as you can see in the upper left-hand corner, those are the 13 stations we're talking about. You have your Maker Space Station, you have your STEAM Wall Stations where we have all different types of magnetic types of stations. We have STEAM Tables, we have initiatives underneath them where we store and bring out the best in all of those. We also have reading and listening and puppet stations where the children can flourish and succeed with those. In the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see Dr. Diskin actually got to stop by and she was able to see our children were able to take materials from the STEAM Lab and they were able to make Valentine's Day boxes based on any type of creative book or design that they thought of. It was very adorable to see. From the STEAM Lab, we then moved into Schedule C Opportunities where we were able to offer AM sessions from 8:15 until 8:45 in the morning for all of our students to come. They can come with siblings, they can come with friends from other classes. We have over 20 sessions each year that are available to these students and it's just a really great opportunity for them to hang out with people from all over. We were also able to use this opportunity to extend into the ASC classes after school as well. So in addition to all the other enrichment offerings that we have, we're able to utilize the STEAM Lab and offer different classes in the fall, winter and spring after school as well. And then finally, we also have our STEAM Camp that we have been running since 2022. In the beginning, we started off with two staff members and 19 Hartshorn students for one week to pilot it and then since then, as you can see, we've flourished into multiple staff members, high school assistant counselors, many students and multiple weeks. In the upper right-hand corner, you have a student band that was created off of Ada's violin, which is the story of the Recycled Orchestra of Paraguay. So our students reenacted that by being able to come up with their own creative different musical instruments from scratch. You also see in the bottom left-hand corner, Mr. Demel working with our green screen technology and it's been really interesting and exciting for our students to be able to take part in. So each day, our students come in and they take part in small group STEAM activities and experiments. We have read-alouds and discussions all related to STEAM. We have physical, social, emotional, diversity, art classes, as well as all group and small group activities. Some of these small group activities allow for students to break apart into various grade levels and then our whole group activities allow all the children to be together from K through 4, which is also a really nice opportunity for them. And then we've also been able to take the STEAM Lab and turn it into a place where students can get together and create school murals. So what you're seeing right there is an entire hallway in our Hartshorn STEAM, in our, excuse me, in our Hartshorn building where students, our first year of creating the STEAM Lab, brought together their amazing artistic abilities and helped to create an entire hallway based off of the idea of STEAM and exploration and they were able to take part in this. And then every single year, what we do is we update those photos on the wall with new examples of how our children take part in STEAM initiatives throughout the entire year and throughout the summer. So why do we do all this? STEAM education is key to preparing our students for the future. It teaches practical, real-world problem solving, making learning engaging through direct application of knowledge. The approach personalizes learning and it empowers our students to express their interests and build self-advocacy. It also significantly boosts their self-confidence and it enhances their collaboration skills through group projects and it encourages all students to contribute and lead. Plus, it fosters cultural understanding amongst diverse learners. So now, it is time to hear from some of our wonderful students. Tonight, we have Evvy, Ryan, Leila and Aria joining us and in their own words, they're going to share some of their thoughts regarding their Hartshorn STEAM experiences. They've all taken part in the STEAM Lab opportunities for several years now and some of them have also been a part of the STEAM Camp for a couple of years as well.
Good evening. My name is Evvy. I love many things about the STEAM Lab, STEAM and the amazing STEAM Camp. Firstly, I love STEAM because you use many things that are all in my interest area and other interest areas. I love science, technology, engineering, art and math, which makes STEAM an amazing thing for me. I love the STEAM Lab because of all the various fun things that you can do and how organized and well-done and set up. Lastly, I love STEAM Camp because of all the fun activities that are prepared, how well everything is set up and how the teaching part of the day is split up into three pieces with each teacher teaching something different and fun. STEAM, the STEAM Lab and STEAM Camp are amazing ways to make friends, learn something new and much, much more. I have a couple of things that I learned about the STEAM from Hartshorn experiences and I have a few things I want others to know about STEAM. I learned different creative ways to approach problems. I would like others to know about all the different activities in the STEAM Lab. Some of them are the Maker Space Station, the Maze and the Puppet Station. Lastly, I want others to know how you can use creativity, critical thinking, problem solving and other useful skills in the wonderful world of STEAM. STEAM is something that everyone should get to enjoy, not only Hartshorn, but everywhere else too.
Hi, my name is Leila. What do I love about the Hartshorn STEAM Lab? Well, that's a great question. There are so many things I love about STEAM, but one of my favorite things is the Maker Space. I get to be creative, use my art skills and work with my friends. I also love the yoga station. It's so fun and I get to move around a little bit and stretch. It was also really fun when we did coding during STEAM. In addition, the morning programs are really fun. There are so many awesome things that I love about the Hartshorn STEAM Lab. There are a bunch of things I have learned about STEAM from having the Hartshorn STEAM experiences. One of them that is that it's great to be creative. Also, it's fun to make mistakes. I would like other people to know how fun STEAM programs can be.
Hi, my name is Ryan. There are a lot of things I like about STEAM. I like how STEAM is fun. STEAM is fun because in STEAM you can make, you can make stuff in the Maker Space area. STEAM is also fun because there is a puppet station in our STEAM Lab. In the puppet station, you could act out puppets and have lots of fun with friends. People can also see your puppet almost like a show and you get to perform for others. STEAM is also fun because all of the games we can, STEAM is also fun because of all the games you can play with each other. I have learned many things in STEAM. In STEAM, I have learned that you can make lots of things out of cardboard and paper. Another thing I've learned in STEAM is that you can make certain things stronger, weaker depending on what materials you use. It is fun trying to rip apart things you make after building them out of different materials. I, also I have learned that you can make a game out of cardboard and paper. For example, you can make a tabletop or real-sized sports equipment for hockey or soccer using your imagination and STEAM materials. In STEAM, I also learned that the puppet show lets you use your imagination. For example, you could use your imagination to think of what you're going to make your puppets do.
Good evening. My name is Aria. I love many different things about Hartshorn STEAM. One thing I love is that you get to use your imagination. You can create whatever you want and have many different tools and supplies to help you. In the STEAM Camp, I like that there are many different types of classes. Mr. Demel does a coding class and Ms. Pignatero does different art classes that include engineering and math. I also love that at one point during the day, we get to play outside or sometimes in the gym and we do STEAM activities in there too. During school days, each class gets to go to the STEAM Lab once a month, once every month at least. If the teacher wants to, they can schedule more days. Those are some of the things I love about STEAM Camp. I've learned many things about STEAM from Hartshorn STEAM experiences. One thing that I learned from Hartshorn STEAM is that you should include others. In STEAM, we worked on many group projects. Also, I learned that you get to be creative. You also need to be good at solving problems. In coding, there are many times where you needed to figure out problems. I learned many things from my STEAM experiences.
Okay, now we'd like to share with you four main skill areas that the National Education Association deems that is important for student success and how STEAM education strengthens those skill areas. Our lovely children are going to share their thoughts and their peers' thoughts that were collected in some surveys on how those four areas have strengthened our students' learning here at Hartshorn. The four areas are communication, collaboration, critical thinking and problem solving and creativity.
Communication. We have learned that communication is the act of giving, receiving and sharing information. Good communicators listen carefully, speak or write clearly and respect different opinions. At STEAM Camp, you can hang out with your friends or make awesome new ones. Talking to each other is super important because it helps you work together like a team. You'll discover cool things about your friends and even learn new stuff just by chatting. If someone new comes to school, tell them to check out the STEAM Lab. It's the best place ever and will make you happy even on a grumpy day. You can help, you can even help each other solve problems just by talking things through in the STEAM Lab. The STEAM Lab is the best part of school.
Collaboration. We also learned that collaboration is when people work with each other to complete a task. Kids at our school love STEAM. They said that in STEAM Lab, they work together all the time. When they collaborate on projects, they laugh, have fun and feel free to share their ideas. They like that everyone is included and no one feels left out. The more new things that come to the STEAM Lab, the more they get to talk and work together because there are always fun new challenges. And just like you learn to treat your friends with kindness, STEAM teaches you to take care of things in the lab so everyone can enjoy them. And guess what? Our friends said working together in the STEAM Lab is so much fun. Nobody even argues.
Critical thinking and problem solving. One super important thing we learn in STEAM is how to be super thinkers and problem solvers. It's like a detective game where you think hard about a puzzle, ask questions to figure things out and try different ideas until you find the best solution. This helps you look at a challenge, understand what's going on and then get creative to find the idea, answer. In STEAM, you learn how to make cool stuff that can help people. You can build marble brunt walkers for people who need help walking, new board games or even make your own sports equipment. You learn to solve problems by thinking about, think about everyone and what they'll need. With so many fun challenges to figure out in the STEAM Lab, you'll never be bored. Plus, there are no rules. You could use your imagination to find, to make anything you want.
Creativity. The last cool thing we learned in STEAM is all about creativity. Creativity is like having a superpower to come up with brand-new ideas no one has thought of before and to make something that already exists even better or more fun. It also means it's okay to make mistakes because being creative means you keep trying even when things don't work out perfectly at first. STEAM teaches you to be patient because of this. When it's STEAM time, everyone gets super excited. You can truly let your imagination fly and build anything you can, you think of. You even learn how to make new things you can try at home. Working with new friends helps you be even more creative by seeing different ideas, especially if you are stuck on something and you need some help. STEAM is Hartshorn's greatest thing in many of our opinions and we think all schools should really have a STEAM program.
Okay, so how do we continue to grow? We are constantly thinking of new ways to expand our Hartshorn STEAM Lab and the Hartshorn STEAM experience. As you can see, all this grew just out of a STEAM Lab. Students and staff have been surveyed multiple times over the years to allow for the growth of the STEAM Lab program and its related possibilities and we continue to do this moving forward. Certain STEAM Lab features are discontinued, enhanced or kept the same depending upon feedback and new stations and materials and activities are introduced every single year. STEAM education is especially important for elementary students. It is key to developing foundational skills and igniting lifelong passions. It teaches young children how to learn through exciting, hands-on discoveries. Through fun experiments and projects, elementary learners sharpen their observation, pattern recognition, analysis and prediction skills. This inquiry-based approach fosters critical thinking and problem solving while strengthening their executive functioning skills like time management and self-control. All of these are obviously vital for school and beyond. Early STEAM exposure also promotes positive social and emotional development and students learn to make decisions, communicate and collaborate effectively, building essential interpersonal skills. This hands-on success in STEAM builds self-confidence, encouraging our young learners to embrace challenges and continue exploring these fields. When they succeed in STEAM, it makes them feel confident and ready to try new things elsewhere. Amidst rapid technological shifts, our STEAM education equips students with vital skills for future careers. Its focus on hands-on, project-based activities cultivates creativity and critical thinking, preparing our children to tackle complex, real-life challenges. We have come so far and we've created so many STEAM opportunities within the walls of Hartshorn since first implementing our STEAM Lab five years ago and I don't see us stopping anytime soon. Thank you for allowing us to share our Hartshorn STEAM experience with you tonight. If you're ever in Hartshorn, please feel free to ask for a tour of our STEAM Lab, our STEAM Camp or murals or just come by and have some fun creating something for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the fascinating presentation and thank you to our students who took the time. I'm sure you're all very busy, but you all made very powerful and convincing, you know, statements about why this is so great. Any, any comments or questions from anyone else? Mr. Farisuddin?
Yes, I want to thank the, the staff and teachers of Hartshorn School for having the STEAM Lab. And I want to say something to the students who are here today. You guys did a great job. You did a great job of communicating and presenting and keep it up. We're so proud of you. Thank you.
Can we take a little picture with the kids?
Yes.
All right, and next tonight, we have an AI presentation and our pilot update presented to us by Ms. Kristy Young and Ms. Lisa Nidak. So we welcome them here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce Lisa Nidak, the Tech Facilitator at Melbourne High School. In this role, Ms. Nidak supports both high school educators and students as well as staff and teachers across the district. Ms. Nidak brings a wealth of experience and has presented on emerging educational technology trends all over the world, including London, Australia, Mexico, Canada and in 40 of the 50 states. Since joining Melbourne, Ms. Nidak has consistently shared her knowledge at both NJAC, which is the New Jersey Education Computing Cooperative and TechSpo conferences annually. She has worked directly with Apple and Google as a presenter since 2007 and most recently she has co-presented to introduce AI tools featured in Apple's Sequoia Operating System, which our district will implement to all teacher devices by the 2025, 2026 school year. In addition to her national and international work, Ms. Nidak plays a key role in our district as a leader in AI integration. She also serves as the AP Coordinator and has assisted in the redesign of the district website. We are grateful for her expertise and her leadership that Ms. Nidak brings to the district. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Nidak as she shares an update on the use of AI in our schools.
Thanks, Kristy. Number one, it's very difficult to follow cute kids. And number two, wow, I really know how to clear a room. All right, so, artificial intelligence. There are still so many questions. It's still so new. Last December, actually November, we celebrated ChatGPT's second birthday. This is so, all still so new to us. But there's lots of benefits of artificial intelligence in education. They're all up there on the screen. I don't need to read them to you. There are so many ways that this can help meet the needs of our students. This can help our staff take some of the automated This can help our staff take some of the automated things off of their plate and spend more time working with their students and focusing on what our students need. And we also need our students to practice with responsible and ethical use of artificial intelligence, as well as any type of emerging technology. It's interesting because the Hartshorn kids told us about this. They told us what they're working on in their STEAM Lab. They're working on creative thinking and analytical thinking and curiosity and lifelong learning. And every year, the World Economic Forum puts out this information for us, and it speaks volumes to what our students need to be working on in their classes. And if we look at the top ten fastest-growing skills by 2030, that's only five years from now, we see that analytical thinking, that leadership and social influence, resilience, flexibility, and agility, and AI, and big data. We need to be using these tools with our students responsibly and ethically. There are some risks and concerns that we all feel about artificial intelligence. The first one is the privacy issue. So, as school districts, we are responsible for abiding by FERPA, COPPA, and SIPA. Any tool that Melbourne is going to use with its students in the district is going to be FERPA and COPPA compliant. SIPA is more about our internet filter. The second thing is the human connection. Are we risking losing that social-emotional component, those conversations with each other by using AI? Well, if we think back to how we use technology in schools, we always base it on SAMR: substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition. If you're using a educational technology with your tool, with your students, how is it redefining what's going on in your classroom? If you're doing substitution or augmentation, you're just taking a piece of paper and giving it to them in a digital format and having them respond to it in the digital format. But if we look at artificial intelligence for the M and the R, then we're doing things with our students using AI that we couldn't possibly have conceived of two years ago. Then there's algorithmic bias. Now, some of this might be new to you, and some of this you might be really familiar to. But there is a ton of bias in artificial intelligence. And if we define AI bias, it's all about the data sets that were used to train the AI tools. So when we look at what AI tools we're going to use with our students, we want to use those tools that don't have as much bias in the background. Now, I was just talking about this in a media literacy class with freshmen today. By 2026, it's estimated that eighty percent of images on the internet are going to be AI-generated. And we actually played a game today, which face is real? It's very difficult to determine what is AI image-generated and what is real. And if you look at the young lady on the right, this was in the news two years ago, but it stands true. She took her very lovely selfie profile picture and uploaded it to an AI tool that would make her look more professional. And if you look at the photo on the left of her, she's of Asian descent. And if you look at the photo on the right of her, she's very clearly white, and her eye color has changed. Because that's the data sets that the tools were built on. There's also AI bias in written form. So large language models like ChatGPT and Gemini and Copilot and Perplexity, and the list goes on and on, have bias built into them as well. And the company that owns ChatGPT, it's called OpenAI, did a study. And what the study found was that the usernames of the users caused bias in the responses. Now, when I talk with our students about this in the freshman seminar that I've been doing, I say, I have a very American name. My first name is Lisa. But the students in my classroom, they're not named Lisa, or Jennifer, or Thomas, or John. And we use ChatGPT today, we used it without logging in so that we wouldn't have bias based on our usernames and because those students aren't old enough to log into ChatGPT. ChatGPT and most of these tools, you have to be eighteen years or older, or thirteen to eighteen with parental permission. But there's never a button to click for the parent to say, okay, I agree. Also, with grading and assessment, ETS, the testing company, ran a study on thirteen thousand essays and found that based on the usernames, which sometimes show the student's ethnicity, some populations were graded harder than others. And in this study, it was found that Asian-Americans were graded harder than other students. So we need to educate everyone in the district on what AI is and what AI isn't. And then finally, the Eliza Effect. Now, this is a newish term, but the Eliza Effect is now that AI is multimodal, meaning that you can speak to it, it can speak back to you, you can upload pictures, it can generate pictures and charts, that people are more likely to believe what the AI chatbot is telling them because you're speaking to it and it's speaking back to you. All right, and then finally, I know you've all been waiting for it, academic integrity. There's always cheating. This is just a new form of cheating. So if we look on the left, most of us have heard the story of the upstate New York attorney, when ChatGPT first came out, he used ChatGPT to write a legal brief, and in that legal brief, there were citations of other cases. Well, that went to a federal judge. The federal judge has the law clerks review it and found that many of the cases mentioned in the legal brief didn't even exist. He was fined, and I always, when I tell the students this story, I always say, imagine how embarrassed his family must be. So I do this with the students in APA, in Chicago, in MLA. Give me a list of ten sources in whatever format I wanted, on whatever topic I wanted, and then we go through the list of sources, and invariably, at least one of them links to nothing. We also know that we can go into a large language model like Gemini and say, for the folks in the back that can't see, act as if you're a sophomore in high school that frequently makes grammatical and spelling mistakes and usually gets a B or lower on an essay, and then write me one. And the large language models will do it. They can write you an imperfect paper. So then, we start hearing about AI detectors. I'm gonna use air quotes because they don't exist. So, I took that essay, that essay from Gemini is in the left monitor. On the right monitor, I, in a Google Doc, type it out, word by word, letter by letter. I made mistakes, I backspace, I went forward, but I copied the essay on the left exactly. Ten percent written by AI. And I'll go even further. There's now AI humanizers. So you can have AI write the essay, put it into the AI humanizer, and it will make it maybe less detectable by AI detectors. And that's that essay on the right. There is no foolproof thing. Our teachers need to know our students' voices, which is very difficult at the beginning of the year, but it happens, and they get to know their students, and they know what they're capable of. They know their vocabulary, their style of writing. So I created a template that I've shared all over the state, and I've shared with our teachers at the high school. This is show your work, and Google Docs made this really amazing update called Tabs. And they're called document tabs. So you'll see I have four tabs over on the left. Students need to show their work. They need to show, this is the brainstorming I did, this is the outline I created, this is my rough draft, and this is my final copy. Because what's happening is students are saying, oh, I, I did my rough draft in a Word doc, and that's on my computer at home. How does that help the teacher see how you wrote? And how does that help the teacher help you improve your writing? So, Melbourne Township Public Schools has some next steps. The first thing is, is that we launched limited pilots. We had twenty-one teachers. We gave them five AI FERPA and COPPA compliant, really amazing tools to review and use with students between May 12th and June 6th. And of course, there were already pockets of teachers across all the schools using some of these tools successfully with students. So I'm gonna give you examples of, and then each of the twenty-one pilot teachers, and then Kristy and I as well, we've been using the tools. They had to pick two out of the five so that they could compare them and have data for us to figure out and determine what is the best one or two tools for the district to adopt. Each time they, those pilot teachers use the tool with their students, we have a reflection form that they fill out. On the top left there, that's Magic School. So Mr. Irons at Wyoming School used Magic School with third and fourth graders. The third and fourth graders were using Makey Makey to create musical instruments. And what Mr. Irons did is he uploaded the data set to Magic School and created a chatbot there for students to be able to talk about their potential ideas and get suggestions for materials and the sizes of everything to help them design their code. The one to the right is from Ms. Cunningham at Washington. She had her fifth-grade students use a tool called Brisk Boost to engage more deeply with an article about self-driving vehicles. After reading the article, the students went into Brisk Boost and debated their argument and were able to get real-time feedback from the chatbot. Now, this interactive tool allowed them to clarify their reasoning, strengthen their claims, and develop more thoughtful and evidence-based responses, all while practicing good digital literacy skills. The third one on the bottom left is from Mrs. Natusi at the middle school. She launched the third tool, which is School AI, their thought partner sidekick to brainstorm ideas to develop a project about climate change issues. Students use the sidekick to work on narrowing down their ideas as well as developing solutions to solve the issue. The feedback allowed Mrs. Natusi to check in with certain students who needed more guidance, as well as to make note of students who were creating well-developed ideas on the topic. Because with all of these AI tools, there's a teacher dashboard where we can see everything and interact with the students right there in their personalized chat. On the bottom right-hand corner is from Senora Lopez Glenn at the high school, obviously the World Language Department. The fourth tool there is called Snorkel. What Senora Glenn did was a do-now activity in a Spanish IV CPB class. The objectives, all to be completed in Espanol, included correctly identifying two main characters from the book that they were reading, providing accurate and descriptive details about the characters, and using complete sentences in Spanish in the present and past tenses to describe characters and what they did thus far in the story. The students were able to get real-time feedback on their Spanish speaking because they could use audio, or their writing because they could type into Snorkel. Not only did they get that immediate feedback, but the students were then instructed to go revise, and then they received a second round of feedback. And then, on top of that, Senora Lopez Glenn opened it to the entire class, and the students were able to leave feedback on each other's work in that digital format. And then finally, I did this one last Friday with a group of freshmen. I did a lesson with them about fake news and how to identify fake news and what reputable resources are and credibility, and, you know, what to be looking for. So I launched this chatbot in School AI called True Story or Fake News, where the students were able to go in and apply everything that they had just learned in the lesson with me to determine whether the examples from the chatbot were fake or real. The next step is for us to develop our teacher expertise. Now, we've done a lot already. Last year, we did an AI for admins at the summer retreat. We did middle school and high school department meetings. We presented on AI, actually, the last two years at new staff orientation. And throughout all the buildings, we did embedded AI instruction through co-teaching. And that's the job of the technology facilitator, is to go into the classroom and co-teach with the classroom teacher. This year, we also did a pilot of a freshman media literacy course, obviously at the high school with me. Super fun. Okay, then, last summer, we offered those four optional PD offerings about AI. There's a lot to come. This fall, there'll be a twenty-minute overview at every building's faculty meeting at the beginning of the year. Then, the plan is that across grades K through twelve, we'll have grade level or department meetings for the AI adoption tools. And that way, the presenter and the teachers can work on grade-level activities that are appropriate and also whatever the subject department is. We'll also be establishing the use of guidelines per department. This summer, we're going to have already decided what our, our AI tools are that we're adopting as a district, so we'll be offering professional development on that. We'll also be going with one of our district goals, which is using AI to support differentiation in the classroom, which is amazing, and then using AI to support teaching. The next step this fall will be the formation of the AI committee, which will most likely include some of the folks that were part of the pilot, plus administrators, board members, students, and parents. We'll be looking at, you know, what we want to publish within the district, and there's so many great examples around. On the left, this I created, you know, just the do's and don'ts of using AI in school. And then on the right is, you know, it's kind of like a rubric or a guideline. So for this assignment, there's no AI use. But for this assignment, you can use AI for specified task completion because the rules and regs will be different in every classroom. But if we have common vocabulary that we're using, then students will be able to transfer those skills from class to class. And then finally, we'll be looking for feedback and to reiterate, because the speed at which AI is changing and growing, we're gonna have to do a lot of reiterating. So, thank you very much for your time tonight and for the opportunity to work with everyone on artificial intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nidak, Ms. Young. I think that was very informative, fascinating. Any comments from anyone? Ms. Medina?
Thank you, Ms. Nidak. I, I wish the previous presenters, the little kids, were here because I, we've been fantastic for them to see how what they're learning is gonna tie in with what you're doing. I think that's great. You know, things like pattern recognition, analytics, regression, those are very basic foundations of how AI works. I mean, the, the GNI and stuff, I mean, machine learning works. What I wanted to say is that I think this is really important right now, what we're doing, right? As, as users of AI. But I feel like when you look at our kids and you think about what they're gonna do, you're twenty-thirty, what are they gonna get out and what kind of jobs they're gonna be working on? The jobs that they're gonna be working on, we haven't even probably thought of right now, right? So I think now more than ever, it's really, really important that, and I, I like, I like how we led- how we led with it last year, you know, the whole growth mindset. I think it's really, really important that we focus on inculcating this love of learning and curiosity, because without that, and adaptability and flexibility, the curiosity, adaptability, flexibility, love of learning. I think if we have that in our kids, they'll be okay, because the curiosity will drive them. And love of learning comes with a lot of things that we did last year. All, you know, all the opening up of access, making it easy, letting them be curious, letting them try, try, fail, try again. These are great things that we've added. I think, I love that we're tying all this together. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Farshad, Ms. Reddy?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nydic. I'm glad that we're embracing AI, whether it's generative AI or otherwise. AI tools are tools. It takes the human to really use those tools. Fundamentally, they're not different from years ago when people learned Excel or any other, a calculator, right? When a calculator came, I think all the schools at that time freaked out as to how students are going to learn math. I think students did just fine after the calculator, and I think they'll be just fine after Gen AI. What I think provides us an opportunity is to focus on the analytical rigor rather than the process, and that's beautiful that you guys are trying different chat bots and so on, and help also the teachers to get to that place where maybe some of the students are already there. And so, I really appreciate and look forward to the work of the committee.
Thanks, Mr. Reddy. Mr. Farshad?
Yeah, just to build on my colleagues. First of all, Ms. Nydic, we are really glad you're here. You know a lot. You have a wealth of knowledge, and this is very impressive. And what you're doing is, you're creating a framework to train both our educators and our kids, and you're putting in best practices. I'm so glad you're going to have an AI governance committee, because it's rapidly evolving. By getting people together, we can figure it out together. So, again, you have a wealth of knowledge, and thank you for bringing it to the district and helping our kids.
Yes, I would like to echo some of what my colleague said. I think the thing that Mr. Farshidin said about the frameworks, I think that is really important. I kind of wanted to stress on that as well. So, thank you for laying out all the FERPA, SEPA, all those guidelines. I think those are really important. I really, I know the room is empty, but I would really urge everyone in the community to take a look at this presentation, because there was a lot of useful information about AI as regards to education and how it's relevant in our schools and how our students can use it. So, thank you so much for your work and for giving us this update. Thanks.
I just want to make a comment to thank you, Lisa and Kristi, for putting so much work into this. I know we've been working on AI policies and thinking about what goes into that, and it's not just as easy as creating a policy, but doing the framework and the background behind it. So, I want to thank you for all the research that you've done. We had a lot of presentations tonight. I just want to take a moment to recognize someone that's here this evening, if I could, if I might, to introduce Mr. Jonathan Roman, who is out in the audience. He is our newest member of our high school guidance counseling team. So, he's come here tonight. He's on the agenda for approval. He's selected from a highly competitive pool of 91 applicants. He brings with him 16 years of experience as a high school counselor, holds a master's degree in school counseling, and possesses certifications of student assistance counselor, SAC supervisor, director of school counseling, and he comes highly recommended. So, thank you for coming tonight. I saw you out in the audience, and I know you probably have lots of things that you'd like to go home and do, so, but welcome and thank you for coming.
Okay. I think we're done with the presentations now. Next is the board president's report. The board president is not here today. I don't have anything to report, so I will turn it over to Dr. Duskin for the superintendent's report.
All right. So, good evening. Our hiring update. Overall, our hiring of the administration, administrative team is largely complete. We are still in the process of the Washington principal selection. The second round of interviews took place on Wednesday, May 28th, and an additional round will take place tomorrow. It is anticipated that a recommendation will be made for the June 16th board meeting. Our new K through 4 elementary principals have been hosting meet and greets with parents and faculty throughout the spring. Glen Woods was held on Friday, and Hartshorn was held today. Odyssey of the Mind. For over 50 years, Odyssey of the Mind, an international creative problem-solving competition, has challenged children to think differently and solve complex problems creatively. At the start of the school year, more than 22,000 teams competed across the United States and in dozens of countries worldwide. These teams competed in Division One Elementary, Division Two Middle School, Division Three High School, and Division Four University. Last week, hundreds of teams, all of which placed in first or second place in their states or countries, gathered together to compete at the 2025 Odyssey World Finals at Michigan State University in East Lansing. As always, Milburn has a strong showing at the World Finals, and congratulations to the two teams from Washington School who placed 22nd and 13th in the world, and the four Glenwood School teams that placed 27th, 13th, and 11th, and the Glenwood Save Me Structure team, who won a second-place trophy for a wonderful theatrical and engineering performance featuring a structure made of 18 grams of balsa wood that held an amazingly 1,030 pounds before crushing. We couldn't be more proud of all their hard work, incredible creativity, and awesome teamwork of all of our Milburn Odyssey teams. So, congratulations to them. Our school transportation supervisors of New Jersey, or frequently known as STS, held their annual poster contest this year at our own middle school. At our middle school, our own middle schooler, Anna Padre, won first place in Division Three. The theme was safety first, safety always. Arna and a teacher or parent will be honored at their spring membership meeting on Wednesday, June 4th. Strawberry festival season continues with Wyoming this Wednesday, June 4th, with a rain date of Thursday, June 5th. South Mountains was postponed to Monday, June 9th, with a rain date of June 10th. Let's go out and have some fun with those kids. Teacher tributes. The Education Foundation is looking for a way to thank a Milburn educator as the school year comes to an end. If you are looking for that way to thank that Milburn educator, the Education Foundation has a great way to show your appreciation while also supporting the grants, the foundation funds. It's easy. Go to milburnedfoundation.org and search for tributes. Select that Milburn educator you'd like to recognize and donate $25 per honorary. The Milburn Ed Foundation will present each educator with a specific special certificate of appreciation notifying them of the honorary donation that you've made in their name with a personalized message from your family. Available today through June 13th. And our spring chorus and orchestra contests are coming up. Milburn High School's annual spring chorus and orchestra concert is this Thursday, June 5th at 7:30 in the high school auditorium. The concert is free and open to the public. Ensembles are under the direction of Mr. Rodrigo Vega, Director of Choir, and Ms. Flora Youssef, Director of Orchestras. The concert opens with the string repertoire, and choral highlights range from folk and spiritual classics. So, and the evening concludes with a powerful performance of When You Believe, a fitting finale, finale to a night that celebrates connection, culture, and community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Duskin. We move on to the board committee reports. First up is the student representative report by Mr. Glad and Mr. Ready. Mr. Ruddy, sorry. I'm getting ready and getting confused.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. It's officially June, and the final stretch of the school year is here. The students at Milburn High School are hard at work preparing for exams, final projects, and the end of the year celebrations. Despite the packed schedule, our school spirit remains high. Battle of the Classes Spirit Week kicked off today and will continue throughout the rest of the week, featuring themed dress-up days and class competitions leading up to the highly anticipated Battle of the Classes final event, where each grade will showcases, will showcase their dance, which takes place this Friday. Meanwhile, the Milburn Education Foundation's annual film fest will take place on June 10th, showcasing a variety of student-created films. The event is open to all and promises to be a great night of creativity and community. Moving on to athletics, the boys volleyball team opened the state tournament with a 2-1 win and then hosted Westfield earlier today in another 2-1 win to advance to the state semifinals. The baseball team is also showing major success in the state tournament after earning back-to-back 1-0 wins. Junior Charlie Wall and sophomore Leo Dalton each threw complete game shutouts. The Millers will host, will host South Plainfield in the sectional semifinals tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Moving on to boys tennis, and they've, they also had an impressive run, already defeating North Plainfield, Scotch Plains, and Chatham, which was previously ranked the top 10 team in the state. Just earlier today, the Millers captured the sectional title with a close 3-2 victory over Ridge. As the school year winds down, Milburn students are finishing strong, and I want to wish the best of luck to everyone as we head into these final few weeks. Now, over to Zach.
Good evening, everyone. Were you ever at a board meeting that was going on for, seemed like for forever, or in a class where the bell seemed like it was never going to ring, and you started thinking to yourself, what would happen if I ran up and pied someone in the face? Would I get kicked out of the meeting or even fired? Would my teacher give me detention or even worse, suspend me? On Wednesday, June 4th, this idea becomes a reality for any MHS student interested. The consequence? A $15 fine to the New Jersey Center for Tourette Syndrome. Even Dr. Myron agreed to get pied for a minimum of $100. You might ask, who's willing to pay $100 to pied their favorite principal in the face? You guessed it, Jeff Feld, who donated three days early at the Milburn Deli. Will Feld be outbid by another student? Well, I guess you need to come to the courtyard on Wednesday during lunch to find out.
All right. Thank you for the wonderful humorous update and very creative, I might add. All right. Next is the governance committee, which I will present. So, there were a couple of meetings. The first one was on May 14, 6:00 PM. Board members present were Ms. Patina, Mr. Brian Lawrence, Mr. Vishwadee, and myself. Staff present was Ms. Nancy Dries, Mr. John Conley, and Mr. Dave Bailey. The committee reviewed private school data, which was presented at the last board meeting. Mr. Bailey presented the personnel report. The committee also discussed the possibility of adopting Strauss ESME's District Online service. The meeting concluded at 7:15 PM, respectfully submitted by Ashivani. The other meeting was on May 21st at 7:30 PM. Board member present were Ms. Patina, Mr. Brian Lawrence, Mr. Vishwadee, and myself. Staff present was Ms. Nancy Dries, Mr. John Conley, and Ms. Terry Hecht. We had an external party, Ms. Sandy Nikasstro from Strauss ESME. Mr. Nikasstro provided a demonstration of Strauss ESME's District Online and ELAN online features at the request of the governance committee, which, which we had discussed at the prior meeting. These are policy management tools offered by Strauss ESME to help school districts efficiently organize, update, and communicate policy information. District Online is a feature from Strauss ESME, which is already in use by several districts, including Livingston, Princeton, Westminster, and North Plainfield. The committee and staff agreed that the advanced search tools and user-friendly interface of District Online would benefit both district administrators and the broader community. While the district currently does use Strauss ESME's ELAN online service to receive policy alerts and updates, District Online would enhance how policies are accessed and maintained. The committee reviewed the additional cost, and with confirmation from the finance committee that budget is available, determined that the added value justifies the expense. The governance committee recommends moving forward with adopting District Online platform and will keep stakeholders informed as the implementation progresses. The meeting concluded at 8:30 PM, respectfully submitted by Ashivani. Any questions or comments? Okay. Next is the Joint Facilities Report by Mr. Bigman.
Good evening. The Joint Facilities Committee met on Thursday, May 22nd, 2025 at 11:30 AM. Present in the meeting were, from the Board of Education and School District side, Cheryl Snyder, Noel Bigman, and Chris Dreschel. From the township representatives, Ben Stoller and Alex McDonald. And from the Recreation Commission, Chris Myers, Chris Zimmerman, Chris Drucker, and Josh Reader. Discussions included old business. The first topic was the paper mill field erosion project. The discussion pursued and was, status was discussed and the timing was discussed. The second topic for old business was the feasibility report for using the backfields for sports. The discussion about the feasibility study continued from the prior meeting and included a recommendation to establish an ad hoc committee comprising BOE members, township committee members, and the recreation department representatives to further the decision of undertaking the high school backfield expansion project. Topics included turf versus grass surfacing, lighting options, revenue and expense considerations, financing, and other project aspects. New business discussed included field maintenance applications and seating bid. The bid process was determined to be inappropriate, was, sorry, appropriate based upon the anticipated cost of the work to be performed. The joint facilities account was discussed for 2024 and 25, including a discussion of revenues, expenditures, and net balance. The third topic included the arbiter scheduling software. The scheduling software was purchased and includes training for a key, a few key users, with all parties excited about the enhanced functionality of the new product. The last discussion topic was field fees and season timing. There was a discussion about the 2025 and 2026 field utilization fees and the differences between the rec department and school district schedules. That concluded the meeting, respectfully submitted by Noel Bigman.
Thank you, Mr. Bigman. Any questions or comments? Okay. This, this past spring, we've had a lot of rain and a lot of sports practices being canceled because of that, so I'm hoping that we can make some progress on the field utilization. Ms. Snyder?
It's going to be discussed at the next Finance and Facilities meeting, which is next week, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Well, Program Committee did not meet last week, so there's no report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Conley for the Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a update from the Curriculum and Instruction Department. The CNI Department has been working on the following items over the last several weeks in conjunction with the Program Committee. Students, regarding AP summer assignments, students should follow teacher timelines to stay on track, especially those enrolled in multiple AP courses as they prepare for the fall. Those needing increased deadlines or some flexibility with the deadlines should contact their AP teachers in advance to coordinate. All assignments will be due no later than the start of school. Directors, department chairs, and teachers have been working on final exam revisions for the upcoming final exams at the end of this month. We continue to be working with a group of high school teachers to assess potential modifications to the grading and assessment guidelines for the upcoming fall. CNI has been working with the Summer Professional Development Series, a series of workshops offering teachers, offered to the teachers this summer focusing on differentiated instruction. And CNI has also been working on creating a leadership academy for our new district principals, vice principals, assistant principals, and supervisors to ensure consistency as we onboard this new leadership cohort. Pre-tenure Academy, our curriculum instruction directors, led a series of professional development sessions for non-tenure teachers through the 2425 pre-tenure academy. During, during so, participants received, received giving students a say by Myron Dweck and engaged in collaborative sessions focused on equity assessment and student-centered learning. Teachers and classroom artifacts aligned rubrics to standards and redesigned assessments and explored student self-assessments. The final session is tomorrow, June 3rd, featuring a Q&amp;A with the author, Myron Dweck, who will be remoting in for us to kind of close out that, that pre-tenure academy. Professional development took place today within the district, and district educators participated in professional learning on differentiated instruction to support diverse student needs. Sessions explored ways to adjust content, process, product, and environment, focusing on learning modalities and tools like pre-assessment, exit tickets, tiered tasks, and choice boards. Educators left with one strategy to try, one to expand on, and one to reduce, and key questions for further reflection. Professional development also took place, you know, specifically in different areas. In the K4 level, included grade level meetings, data review, and building-based goal-setting. Technology facilitators collaborated on common planning and finalized the VEX curriculum. At the Washington School, they participated in restorative justice practices in a PD workshop for that. In the middle school, they focused on the identification and the importance of using differentiated instruction to address varying learning styles. And at the high school, teachers continued preparing for final exams and completed, completed a survey on block scheduling, grading, grading practices, and midterm and final guidelines. Summer Skills Sharpening Website. Classroom teachers will share the Summer Skills Sharpening Website on the upcoming weeks. The site is designed to provide students with resources to keep their skills sharp during the summer break. Update on exiting data presentation from last week, last BOE meeting on the 19th. As a follow-up to the data presented at the last Board of Education meeting, the slide presentation was updated and reposted to the Board of Education website. The adjusted slide reflects The adjusted slide reflects the update and has a footnote indicating the adjustment that it was adjusted. MHS Academic Awards, the academic award ceremony for juniors and seniors will be held on Friday, June 6th at 8:30 AM. Congratulations to all of the Melbourne Juniors for their outstanding efforts this year and the seniors, who will be acknowledged for receiving special scholarships and high honors for all their hard work. USA Computing Olympiad, USACO. Congratulations to MHS Junior Alex Wang, one of 24 national finalists selected for the 2025 USA Computing Olympiad Summer Training Camp, which will be held on May 22nd through the 31st at Clemson University, or was held, excuse me. The camp brought together the nation's top pre-college algorithmic problem solvers to, for intensive training and the chance to qualify for the 2025 International Olympiad Informatics. And then finally, Melbourne Four Miler. Congratulations to Melbourne High School's own Sophia Van Roon, a sophomore at Melbourne High School who finished first overall in the women's division in the 48th annual running of the Four Miler yesterday. This is the third time she has won that overall championship, so congratulations. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to Ms. Schneider for the BA report.
The Business Office has been working on closing out the year and gearing up for next year. From the financial perspective, on tonight's agenda is Resolution M3A, an annual resolution authorizing the Business Administrator to pay bills at the close of the fiscal year on June 30th and for two bill lists in July, necessary because of bills to be paid as the new year opens, as well as the regular monthly bill list. These additional check runs, coupled with the alternate board meeting schedule in the summer, necessitates the authorization so we could pay our bills on time and subsequently have the Finance Committee and then the full board approve them. We are in the process of preparing for the 2526 school year and so you can, you will continue to see resolutions for contract renewals, including on tonight's agenda for the renewals of special education, added district placements and substitute services. Renewals of agreements with the Melbourne Institute of Talent and the SAM program for use of our facilities, field maintenance services, textbook purchases and technology licenses. And we would like to thank the Melbourne Education Foundation for their donation of $149,600 towards district grants. Their ongoing support and inspiration for continuing to advance our programs is amazing. Thank you to the Ed Foundation and everyone in the community that supports their initiatives and fundraising.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider, and thank you to the Ed Foundation as well. All right, I think it's time for public comments. Please state your name and address for the record. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Responses to questions and comments will be posted to the district website before the next meeting or within 10 school days. And if you can just give me a moment to, or can someone do the time?
Check, check, check.
I got it, three minutes.
So I'm Mariana Davila. I live on Parsonage Hill Road and my co-chair Laura Aggie and I are here to represent the Melbourne Education Foundation. We are very happy that you guys have accepted the donation. The MEF grants are wonderful to like enhancements to the district and we are just so grateful to be able to provide that. MEF, just a quick thing, MEF has given almost $4 million in grants since inception and 1.2 million in grants in the last five years. So it's just, it's huge and it's because of the donations and the support that we get from the community and we just really appreciate it. A few of the, of the grants coming up that I'm really excited about are the Math Stackers for the elementary school. The teachers are really, really excited about those manipulables. The Century Path at Washington School and then I personally love the Paper Mill Visit. I love that the middle school gets to go. It enhances their education. It just makes me very happy that it's something that we can provide. And then just upcoming, a little plug for upcoming events, as Jackson said, Film Fest is coming up on June 10th at the Rackets Club. We would love a great community turnout. And then also a quick plug for the Parking Raffle that closes on the 10th and the drawing is on the 11th. And then teacher tributes are also open right now and they close on the 13th. So thank you very much.
Jeanette Glass, 348 Oak Short Hills Road, dear administrators and board members. It has been over a year since we first requested a meeting with you all to discuss our son's physical, emotional and mental well-being. Since then, not only has our request been denied, but according to Oprah records, the district has spent tens of thousands of taxpayers' dollars strategizing against our son's needs and the medical advice of his doctors. Strategize being the language that appears repeatedly in the district billing records. At the last board meeting, the district nurse presented the annual health and wellness report. I had to leave the room. While the report highlighted the district's commitment to student health, nothing in it reflected what our son has experienced. The report outlined the district's role in supporting the physical and mental well-being of students. It emphasized early intervention, collaboration with medical professionals, accommodations for chronic conditions and a promise to ensure that any student in need will receive appropriate care and support. But for our son, this commitment has not materialized. Despite multiple medical diagnoses and recommendations from his healthcare team, the district has consistently acted in opposition. I couldn't speak then, my emotions and disappointment were too overwhelming. But I'm here today to advocate for our son, his safety and health. Despite a year filled with surgeries, tests and injury, Dexter's prior achievements led him to gymnastics national championships, where he won four medals, including a first-place gold medal and earning the title of National Vault Champion. Instead of celebrating his achievement, the district responded with what felt like retaliation. What ought to have been a proud and uplifting milestone became a source of deep sadness. Weeks later, after a thorough selection process by the USA Gymnastics, Dexter was again chosen to train at the U.S. Olympic Training Center in Colorado Springs, his fourth year in a row. It's a rare honor earned through dedication and resilience, granted to few of the most promising gymnasts in the nation. But Dexter is more than an athlete. He's a student who also wants to succeed in school. He's juggling intense physical demands and ongoing medical care, all while striving academically. That is why a supportive school environment is not optional, it is essential. So we're again asking this board, please grant us a meeting to discuss our son's individual needs, an athlete and a student with complex medical history and a full team of professionals backing him. The system cannot continue to fail our children. We ask you to help make health and wellness more than a presentation, to make it a reality. Please, can we sit down and talk about our son's health, safety and well-being in our school district?
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Feld, 11 Alzegunder Lane, Short Hills. I think we should be celebrating the abundance of talent that our students have. Last Thursday, I attended the cabaret. It was phenomenal. And I, and I'm going to renew my request that we broadcast this on our darkened cable access channel. Because the amount of talent that was displayed and many of these children that were performing showed the bench strength of this community. I am also, as to the SAM lease, I am a pro advocate of that program. My kids went through it, allowed my wife and myself both to have our careers. And it was a program that I think the community really has to understand how beneficial it is when you have two working parents. I'd like to bring up some events that occurred since our last meeting on May 19th. The next night, as I've been always talking about long-term tax exemptions, the Township Committee voted down the nine main street, non-urban renewal entity, HMFA long-term tax exemption. Keep on focusing on that. On Wednesday, the Planning Board will be considering amendments to the master plan regarding affordable housing, round four compliance plan. There's very important information in there and I recommend the board to look at it. It talks about demographic changes in the community in the past and what they anticipate. Our planner has noted that about a third of our community was not born in this country. Of that percentage, half of those people are not even citizens. And when I first appeared before this board, I started talking about the importance of civics and empathy. And we heard all about A1, AI, but we had to focus on the civics component and the empathy, which is, makes us not computers. Because when Cornell years ago, they shared a book and it was, how do you tell a human versus a computer or a robot is empathy? And that's like the value that we had to be emphasizing as our education. Zach, I am assigning you the right, if someone comes in to bid, that I contribute it. I mean, it was just by a pure fluke that I met three students at the Melbourne Deli on Sunday and I asked them what was the status of the pie-in contest? And they said, it's going on. And I said, can I give you the money? And I put cash on the table as Mr. Myron says, always take the cash. But I like you when you do your survey, because we talk about civics. You know, in-person voting for the primary begins tomorrow. Independents have the right to vote. But I will ask the students, especially the graduating seniors, two questions. In a democracy, based on what happened in the last presidential election, should you trust, trust an established incumbent who refuses to debate its primary opponent? And then also, as look at our state constitution, I'll just finish this one sentence. Whether taxpayers' trust fund monies should be used to fund a defamation complaint against me personally, on behalf of our mayor, our deputy mayor and our BA. There's a prohibition in our state constitution. The question is whether, why are they trying to shut down other things? I'll come back later and talk about some other follow-up questions because my time is up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. All right, we move on to the Board Action Items. Oh.
Akash Gupta, 62 Meadowbrook Road, Short Hills. First of all, I would love to thank the current administration, especially Dr. Deskin, for making such huge changes to our high school. My son is a senior. He saw the impact of these changes firsthand. Like both open act, much better access to AP courses and the ability to improve from your mistakes in the classes had a huge impact. I wanted to acknowledge that. For example, he loves his physics one and two AP classes and he would not have had access to those classes if we would not have changed the access criteria. And this is, that would have been a shame, right? A kid who is going into an engineering pathway loves those classes, getting above 95s in those classes, would not have an access to those classes if we would not have made those changes. And then the second piece, the ability to pause, reflect upon your mistakes. I know it is harsh on teachers, but to me, but that is the point of learning. Like nothing else in this world is learned without focusing on what mistakes you made and trying to fix that. It's, I don't know who it helps to just, let's keep rushing, finish the slavers and we are done. Like it doesn't matter what you, the assessments, what happened there and kids are just running through it. And it's a big culture shift from simply ranking the kids, filtering them to, let's focus on, are we learning? Are we fixing our mistakes? And we saw it firsthand, like I know our school district have been talking for many, many years to reduce amount of stress. This is the first time, every parent I talked to in high school, they firsthand saw big reduction in amount of stress in the kids. And this is what happens when you open access and let kids learn from their mistakes, get some incentive points back. So I would really like thank this administration, the board for the changes you made in the high school. That with that, I do bring one more point, like middle school, some version of same thing is happening. I know it's not intentional, but over time, it has becoming a big filtering culture there. The focus, every homework, every unit test is all about ranking the kids so that we can filter them, do they belong in an accelerated or an honors class or not? The aspect of learning in the class is getting lost. The whole thing is get, make the mistakes outside the class, learn there and then every unit test is a assessment where your kid is being ranked and there is no room to make mistakes. And there is another big problem there because the school says, the school policy says 90 and up is above proficient, but somehow it seems they don't believe themselves. We have a cutoff of 93. What does that mean? You cannot miss a single homework or you one bad test and you're not, you're not good enough. And that could be in September, in October, right? We are judging a kid what happens in May, June for the next year. They may fix their mistake. It doesn't matter anymore because kid made a mistake in September, October, November and his path has already decided what he, please. So I, I'm proposing three key changes in middle school. Some version of believe in your own proficiency standard and bring that 93 to 90. Make sure, some version of unit tests are, there is a leeway for kids to make a mistake and incentive to fix those mistakes, just like we did a great job in high school. I'm not saying go all the way there, but at least make some changes. So the focus moves from filtering to learning. And then the third big point is, can teachers automatically share class averages? Instead of parents asking for that, it's very hard for parents to ask teachers for averages for every test because they are trying to judge, was the test harsh or my kid needs the support? And there is no system to go in between that. And parents can't just ask every assessment, like what was the class average? What was the class average? They're annoying teachers now.
Mr. Gupta, can I request you to come back for the next set of public comments? Like, thank you so much. I don't know if there are other people. Okay, if you want to finish, we can give you.
I think that, that's pretty much it. I really applaud what we have done in the high school. And right now, there is a disconnect between middle school and high school, especially for example, we say CPA to Excel is, you can get a waiver at 90%, but if you're eighth grade, you need a 93% to get into a accelerated class. So it's a, it's a big disconnect that we have created and I would request the board and the Program Committee to look at it and bring the similar positive changes in middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments before we move on? Okay. All right. So moving to the Board Action Items, Instruction Agenda Items. We'll do the board member comments. Are there any covers for the Instruction Agenda Items? Okay, can I have a motion to move Instruction Agenda Items M1A through H in consent agenda format? Mr. Farashuddin, Mr. Reddy in second, all in favor? Can I have a motion to approve Instruction Agenda Items M1A through H in consent agenda format? Ms. Patina, Mr. Reddy in second. Okay, so M1A, resolved to affirm Superintendent's recommendation of Hib investigations for the period of April 28th to May 23rd, 2025. Resolved to approve professional development requests. Resolved to approve the application for the Focus Grant. Resolved to approve 2024, 25 SY field trips. Resolved to approve donation from the Melbourne Ed Foundation, thank you once again, in the amount of $149,000 to fund proposed grants as listed below. Any comments? All right, roll call. I'm sorry, did I? Did I skip something? I skipped the page entirely. All right, that's what I did, sorry, my bad. F, all right. So resolved to approve for professional services as part of the district's Leadership Academy as listed below. Resolved to approve out-of-district special education placements for 2024, 25 school year as listed below. Resolved to approve out-of-district special ed placements for 2025, 2025, 26 school year. I think that's all, all right. Any comments? No, all right, roll call please.
Ms. Patina? Yes. Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farashuddin?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on to Personnel Agenda Items. Can I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Addendum dated June 2nd, 2025? Can I have a motion to approve the personnel report and addendum dated June 2nd, 2025? Mr. Bigman, Mr. Farasudin. Resolve to approve the personal, okay, any comments? No, roll call?
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Mr. Farasudin?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Pathina?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wonderful. Dr. Diskin, would you like to?
I'd like to take a moment to thank one of our paraprofessionals, who is retiring after 16 years, Eva Linya. So congratulations.
Okay, we move on to the business agenda, business agenda items. Are there any carve-outs? No, okay. Can I have a motion to move business agenda items M3AL and M3N to you in consent agenda format? Mr. Farasudin, Mr. Reddy, all in favor? I'll look that side, I promise, next time. Can I, can I have a motion to approve business agenda items M3A to L and M3N to you in consent agenda format? Ms. Pathina and Mr. Bigman, wonderful. All right. Resolve to approve additional bill payments during the months of June and July. Resolve to approve the lease of agreement with the Melbourne Institute of Talent. Resolve to approve an agreement with the SAM program for the use of Glenwood School for the provision of before and aftercare services. Resolve to approve the second renewal of substitute teacher and paraprofessional staffing services contract with ESS Northeast. Resolve to approve one-year agreement for grade six through eight math and focus program. Resolve to approve the purchase of AP modern, AP World Modern textbooks. Resolve to approve the purchase of AP Statistics textbooks. Resolve to approve the purchase of AP Chemistry textbooks. Resolve to approve the purchase of a three-year digital license for Reporteros 1 and 2. Resolve to approve the purchase of additional American History textbooks. Resolve to approve a one-year subscription agreement for Hipster Anti-Bullying Software. Resolve to approve a purchase agreement for 25, 26 year with Signal Electronic for, Signal Electric for Monitoring Inspection Services. Resolve to approve an agreement with Macabre Environmental Services for Melbourne High School Auditorium Abatement Project. Resolve to approve a purchase agreement with DynTech Artic for Meraki Security Cameras. Resolve to approve the creation of presentation spaces at South Mountain and Glenwood Elementary Schools with Keyboard Consultants. Resolve to approve purchase agreement with CDWG for the purchase of smart boards. Resolve to approve year two of a three-year agreement with Comcast of Philadelphia for DDoS Protection Services. Resolve to approve a purchasing agreement with Computer Design and Integration LLC, a head for 144 five-year VMware software licenses, and an update for Cisco HyperFlex System. Resolve to approve a purchase agreement with CWG for purchase of front row sound systems and associated technology equipment. And resolution regarding field maintenance services. Resolve to award the bid for field application services to True Green for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027. Any comments? Mr. Reddy?
I want to bring attention to the agreement that the board is making with Melbourne Institute of Talent. Over the years, Melbourne Institute of Talent has grown its programming from starting as a Chinese language school to today providing a variety of educational opportunities to not just the Chinese community within the town, but the entire town. Just this past weekend, they hosted a student panel of seniors, graduating seniors for advice to incoming and the rest of the high school students. It's been a great program, and I hope the other communities, sub-communities within Melbourne would take that as an example and bring more programming to students and the community alike. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, that's, that's a great call-up, Mr. Reddy. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, Ms. Schneider.
Mr. Farasudin?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Ms. Pathina?
Yes.
Mr. Bigman?
Yes.
Ms. Shivani?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Any old business? Mr. Farasudin?
Yeah, this falls under our district and board goals of culture and inclusion. I just want to make a short comment. The last three months have seen some horrific acts of antisemitism in our country, including the governor of Pennsylvania, a young couple in DC hoping to start a life, and just yesterday, peaceful marchers in Boulder, Colorado. It is all of our responsibility to speak out against antisemitism. I want to acknowledge that our administration and teachers and staff work hard every single day to ensure the safety of all of our students in the district. There's a lot going on. We board members see it behind the scenes, and I want to acknowledge and thank you guys. Let's make sure that every child feels safe and welcome at Melbourne, and let's speak out against all forms of hatred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farasudin, for that thoughtful comment, and definitely echo everything that you said. Any new, any new business? Ms. Pathina?
I'm not sure if it's old or new, but I just wanted to kind of go over some of this, based on some of the public comments today. Maybe I want a kind of a refresher for myself about the changes we've made in middle school, if we've had any additional changes on, you know, the Excel programs and the kind of the extending that program to more students. So if there was any changes made to that, I'd like to just kind of refresh my memory on it. And I think one of the things that I actually wanted to kind of talk about also was kind of this whole rushing the syllabus, if that is still happening. I think it'd be great if the program committee can look into that as well, you know, just to, even for AP. I've, I think we've made a big difference, but I know that we've talked about, you know, to kind of, it kind of goes back to kind of making learning more fun, making, you know, improving students' curiosity. I think it's important that we don't rush and go beyond, like, the AP curriculum. I wanted to just quickly ask about the AP coursework and summer assignments. Does that, do students, when they sign up, do they know, like, roughly how many hours in the summer they need to put in for an AP assignment? Is that something that the guidance counselor goes over with them?
So it doesn't come from the guidance counselor, it actually comes from the individual teacher? So each course is a little bit different?
Each course is.
Right, so teachers are reviewing those assignments with, what student says they are distributing that information out?
Because we removed the cap on number of APs. We never had a cap on number of APs. We removed the cap on the GPA weightage. So I'm assuming we're going to have a lot more students trying to take more APs. So would that mean that'll be a lot more summer assignments, and is that something we're looking into?
Each summer assignment will carry its, you know, each AP course is going to carry a summer assignment.
Every single one, right? Okay.
Based on the teacher's, you know, prerogative of where they want to bring those students to prior to the start of the school year.
Yeah. I just wanted to kind of, you know, to the program committee and the CIS, that if we could look at, you know, are we rushing syllabus at any point in any of these courses, including middle school and AP? If we can continue to refine that, and also rewarding improvement. So, you know, just something that Mr. Gupta mentioned on the public comments earlier, if a child, you know, shows improvement, there should be some reward to that as well, not just kind of a flat outcome in the end. So if, you know, student starts as a B student and then shows continuous improvement, there should be that little bit of reward to see that. And I don't know how that, you know, eventually it kind of materializes in terms of course selections and stuff, but I think there should be some of that element in ranking the student. Thank you.
I was just going to say, we can certainly look at it in program. In regard to the AP, remember that those AP, we are, you know, AP's national. So, you know, you don't go to school until the end of August, most, or September, most schools are starting, or not most, but a lot of schools start earlier, either get out early or what have you. But, you know, the summer assignments are important for them to be able to access information and be able to get that ahead, sort of a head start. Otherwise, we won't get to it. So I wouldn't even worry about doing too much. I would worry about making sure that we get where we need to be, so that those kids are successful in May. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to build on what Dr. Diskin said. A lot of school districts start in August, as well as we have a week off in February. So it's about instruction hours to cover the amount of material. That's why the summer assignments are given, because a lot of other schools are done. They're already out. They're, they're out of school. And so our kids, it's a national program. AP exams are held the first two weeks in May. They, our teachers simply don't have enough hours to get through all the instruction because of the way our calendar works. That's why there is summer assignment to make sure we're on track.
And just to kind of, we did do a review of some top schools in the area, and looking at, you know, their summer AP practices. So it is a very common thing for students to have summer assignments. They are varying, I will say that. But what, one of the things that we did in my comments in my report was really about providing students with the flexibility that they need over the summertime. So historically, we had a July 31st deadline for things to be done or check-in. We still support the timeline to help students manage their assignments over the summertime, but we are giving, we are opening up some flexibility there. And so it is incumbent upon our teachers to be able to provide a good timeline. We think that that's a structure that should be in place for students. But if, if students do need that ability to extend to towards closer to the end of the summer, we feel that they should have that ability to do that. And, and we, we ask for good communication as, as we're opening that up this year, so.
Okay, I think we're kind of delving into board member comments a little bit, and it is time for public comments round two, so let's do that, and then we'll come back to board member comments. So next round of public comments, same rules, please state your name and address for the record. Limited to three minutes, responses will be posted. And I, I do have a humble request. I would really like, appreciate that we could stick to school-related topics and not bring any, you know, if somebody is suing someone, we'd really not, this is not the place for that.
My name is Jeffrey Feld, 11 Alexander Lane, and there's a lot of questions about political free speech, and the question's about civics. And I, I am offended by your comment, by what you just tried to content suppress me. I just want to follow up on what happened at the last meeting. If we could have an updated enrollment numbers that were promised, I think Mr. Bigman asked a question as to the percentages, when you actually look into it. I ask questions about the administration, administrative level. I think we're entitled to that. I think we're entitled to know the source of funding, garden leave, and the severance dates. Because one of the issues we have is the funding of this. Did you, are you using monies from this count, this school year, or are you going to be using monies for next year? Also, I think you need to look at your post-January 1, 2024 time summaries. There's inconsistencies. When you look at this budget in the 2023 to 2024 year, because in the middle of the year, you had new council, but through the computer-generated summaries, it was about $130,000 that was paid to your new attorneys, but for the whole year, you only put down, like, $147,000. That, to me, is inconceivable, that for six months, that your prior council only charged you for $17,000. Something is wrong. I'm very concerned about gatekeeper concerns. You might want to consider having an owns-budsman, because there's been, through the year, let's remember last December, let Sammy skate. That there maybe should be a level in there to be intermediate, you know, between the parents and the Board of Education. And also tonight, one resolution was removed, that was M. Can someone tell us what that resolution was, what M was that was withdrawn? But I am getting very offended by a certain group of people in this town that try to suppress political free speech. Because when I started coming here, I talked about civics. And all we always hear about is STEM, STEM, STEM. At least we put an A in now for arts. But one of the things are, is civics is very important. Thank you.
Any other board member, any other public comments? Okay, we can now move to the board member comments. I'm sorry, Ms. Schneider.
As we're going into those comments, I am happy to answer about what was removed, because it was publicly out there before. And so what was removed was, we were looking to award a contract regarding the installation of the HVAC at the high school auditorium. There was a question with the agreement that we were working on, and so it was withdrawn. It should be showing up on the next agenda.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Schneider, for the update. Board member comments, Mr. Reddy?
Thank you. So among the celebrations earlier, one thing that I feel was a remiss as celebrating the coaches that were part of the success. The Eagles, I believe for the most part, were coached by Mr. Tan, who was sitting at the back. He's been a tireless volunteer, and he operated in many capacities since, both across Troop 17 and 19. He's probably one of the most humble guys, just sat at the back, never said a word through the process, but he's the one, most likely, behind each one of the scouts that becoming an hero. Same thing, I think, goes to all the RDC teams. Having been a RDC coach twice, I know what it takes from the coach, the coaches, and the coaches definitely are the unsung heroes of the RDC of the mine in journey. So I just wanted to bring note to that. I also want to go back, take a chance to go back to some of the questions that Ms. Pathina brought, and the rejoinder from Mr. Farasudin. I think Mr. Connelly explained to an extent the changes we are making. And I think it'd be good for us to, to get some clarity on what the changes are. Previously, there were deadlines, hard deadlines, that students were in the middle of the summer. What the program committee is, and with Mr. Connelly's help, and the staff's help, doing, has discussed is making those basically soft deadlines, where the real hard deadline is only the beginning of the year. So this is actually a huge improvement for the students, so they can, depending on their schedule, some students might be traveling at the beginning, or the middle, or whatever it is that they're doing over the summer, have the flexibility to be able to do work at their pace. The guidelines, I think, are still helpful for most students in making sure that they're meeting their intermediate goalpost, but hopefully, the high school will only hold the students accountable for the end and beginning of, sorry, the beginning of the school deadline, that for the completion of the work.
If I could just add too, we just want, we also think with the increased, the expansion of students being eligible for some of these AP courses, we, the timelines are really important, because some of the students will be challenging themselves, and we want them really to understand what they're taking on with these AP-level courses. So it's important to, you know, those timelines are there really as a safeguard, you know, a procedural safeguard, so that people can understand what the workload is going to be associated with it. So that was the conversation surrounding, still holding on to the timelines, but making some of those deadlines soft, as Mr. Reddy mentioned.
Ms. Pathina?
Just a quick question, actually. So when, did we change also when the, when the AP summer assignments are given out? Are they already out, like, for the kids who've already selected, or is that?
They're rolling out now.
They're rolling out. So, so the kids do have, like, a few weeks to even kind of get an insight into the class and see if they want to maybe make some adjustments to their schedule? Has that always been the case? It's always handed out before the end? Okay, all right, that's good to know.
So historically, that July 31st deadline was really so that students had a good sense of where they were? There's two months essentially for them to have the assignments in advance.
Yeah, the Google classrooms are set up right after the scheduling is done, and the assignments and work starts getting posted. the assignments and work starts getting posted. That's how I understand it. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yep. Any other comments? Okay. Wonderful. There's no exec session today. I'm going to look this side now. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Bigman and Ms. Patina, all in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.